Okay, it is eight o'clock. That is the scheduled time to begin our day three of our annual budget tour. And the final presentation, we do have five council members present? Five council members present, I think, is Pittner, Councilman Pittner? Is he online? I heard a ding, so.
I'm here.
Okay, Councilman Pittner is in the house, virtually. And then the final budget presentation is from Brian Billingsley and planning and economic development. So at this time, Brian, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning, everyone. I'm pleased to be here this morning to present my budget to you for 2025. I just want to give a quick overview of the community development department and our functions. We have currently have seventeen total employees. Fourteen of them are full-time. We have two part-time employees and one summer help position. We have three divisions, administration, which is myself, and then inspections has nine full-time employees and two part-time employees. And planning has just four full-time employees and one summertime help. And we are currently fully staffed at this time. I'm going to start with the inspections department this morning. And, you know, so for last year, one of our major projects that we worked on is we're trying to get all of our files scanned. We have, you know, dozens of file drawers worth of files dating back to the 1950s. We're trying to get scanned and put away. And then that would allow us to have some extra office space in the, on the public works building for possible future staffing needs if there, if there are any. Another project that the inspections department worked on last year quite a bit was the building permit software project. And they did a soft launch of that project in 2023. I'll talk, and then when I go to 2024, I'll give you an update on where that stands today. And then training and certificates. In 2021, I believe, in the 2021 budget year, we hired Duran Bischof as our plumbing inspector. And I'm pleased to report that Duran has received all of his certifications now. He's now certified as a plumbing inspector one and two, and he's also certified to do plan reviews for plumbing inspections. Every year, our staff has to go through continuing education requirements. They go through EDU code and NDBOAs. So one significant part of their budget is going back for training. I'm pleased to report that all of our inspectors now are fully certified in their jobs. So everyone is up to date. There won't be any need for them to go for any new certificates, but there always will be a need for them to go back to get training every year. And then the last thing we did last year was we purchased a desktop plan review table. We now have a big plan review table in an office, and then we have two staff members with smaller desktop-sized tables. So we're in good shape when it comes to plan review tables. We won't be ordering any more in the near future. So here's an example of some of the property files we have for those of you. I know if you're veteran of these meetings, I've showed these files to you in the past. This is the number of files that we currently have out public works that we're trying to tackle. We have two part-time employees that are working on that task right now. And here is the next set of drawers. So 127 file drawers total that need to be scanned. It's a big project. So for this year, inspections department is pretty much wrapped up their work with the building permit software program. We did that soft launch in late 2023, early 2024. There were some bugs with the system, and Luke and his staff has done a great job, along with Emily Hiddle. I have to credit her as well for fixing those bugs. We went live on May 1st. We haven't had any issues with it. I know it's only been a week, but so far, Luke is reporting to me, everything seems to be working really well. Again, we have another 50,000 budgeted for this year as we're tackling that large file scanning project. We budgeted 10,500 on training on the new codes that were adopted last year. IBC comes out every three years with new codes, and we always have to go to continued education and learn about the changes that have been made over that time. We're hoping to do four luncheon learns. Last year, we did have in our budget for luncheon learns. That's where we bring in the contractors and train them on the new codes that have been adopted. We like buy some pizza, give them some pizza, and train them for the day on the new codes. Unfortunately, Luke and his staff were unable to do that last year. They were simply just too busy trying to keep up with their workload. We've had an ever-increasing workload in the inspections department, and they were not able to do that last year. They're hoping to do it again this year, but then again, it really depends on timing for them. And then the last thing we're working on this year is we're trying to adjust our plan review fees. And that's where I'm going to segue into a new position request in the inspections department. We're proposing to hire a commercial plans examiner to help take some of the workload off of Luke. This position was previously available in the inspections department during the oil boom era. It was eliminated during the 2018 budget cuts. Just to let you know, Luke and his staff conducted 525 plan reviews last year. That's a lot of plan reviews for not having a full-time plan reviewer. Luke is essentially, we pay him to be a building official, but really, he's really a plans examiner for the city right now. He spends more time doing plans examining work than he should be. We, last year, we learned that our, that our insurance rating went from a three to a four. Now, at a city council meeting last month, you heard that the fire department insurance rating is a two and almost a one. Last year, we went from a three to a four, and they found that Luke and his staff spent too much time doing plan review work and not enough time doing the jobs that they're really paid to do. For example, Gage is our lead inspector. He should be out in the field supervising the inspectors, you know, providing assistance and guidance to them. You know, Gage is spending too much time in the office right now, conducting plan reviews, you know, whenever Luke is not able to get to them. So that was one of the reasons, don't be surprised if you see a slight increase in insurance rates because of that increase. I know I forwarded the email to all of you, at least on the council last year, about that increase. And I think we can get back down to the, to the rating of a three if we can hire this position and then maybe make a couple of other tweaks within the, within the inspections division as well. So I've worked with HR and finance staff, and we estimated that the total cost for this position is $99,000 a year. I'm proposing not to raise property taxes. I think the customers who use this service should pay for this service. So I want this program, I want this position funded 100% by fees. I want to raise hourly fee for plan reviews from $75 an hour to $105 per hour. I want to add the flat fee to all residential buildings and accessory structures. So to give an example to you, typically, a plan review for a new home takes about an hour on average. So today, a plan review on a, on a single-family dwelling would probably cost $75. It's all we're charging. Under the, the new fee system I would put up here, it would probably raise to about $180 when you include the hourly fee increase and the flat fee. That would help pay for that position so that way Luke can do the job he's really paid to do. And then on commercial plan reviews, it would be variable. It would depend on the value of the, of the, of the project. If it's a very small fit-up project, under 250,000, it would only be a $175 flat fee. And then that amount would increase up to, and then any projects over a million would be a $500 flat fee attached. This is something I would like to bring to you this summer. I'd like to do a budget amendment because this is really important. We get this position funded as soon as possible to take that workload off of Luke. It also would require us to obviously amend our fee order, or fee schedule as well for this. So before we approve the budget amendment, we would have to approve the fee increases first. I also, we also have a booth at the Home and Garden Show, and I was able to speak to about four or five contractors at the Home and Garden Show. And I asked them, I showed them some of these numbers, and I showed them what, asked them what they thought of this. They thought on the commercial side, it was great. They, right now, our plan review times are taking five to six weeks. Where four years ago, it was taking two to three weeks. So it's, the time has almost doubled, and time to them is money. Because the longer they wait for these plans to be reviewed and approved, the more money it's going to cost them in the long run. So I think they would rather pay these smaller fees upfront and get faster service than waiting, you know, a month, month and a half to get their plans back. I also asked Luke to do some research on, on staffing levels in inspections departments around the state. So obviously, in the cities that are bigger than us, Fargo and Bismarck, they have twice the staffing we typically have. You know, the cities smaller than us obviously have smaller staffing levels. You know, when you compare us to the city closest to us in our size, that would be Grand Forks. We're virtually the same when it comes to permit tax, residential and commercial building inspectors. But when it comes to mechanical and plumbing inspectors, they have two apiece. We only have one. Electrical inspectors, they have two. We don't have any right now. Senior inspectors, they have two. We only have one. They have a, a commercial plans examiner. We do not have one. Grand Forks has a deputy building official and a building official. We only have a building officials. We're much smaller in terms of staff size compared to probably the most comparable city to, to us in the state. When you look at commercial plans examiners, you know, Fargo, they, yeah, they're three times bigger than us. They have three full-time commercial plans examiners. Bismarck has two commercial plans examiners. Grand Forks has one. West Fargo, smaller than us, has one commercial plans examiner. And Williston has a full-time plans examiner. So cities that are smaller than us have a full-time commercial plans examiner on staff. And I think it's time for us to get back into the game and hire this position back and take the workload off of Luke and Gage. So for next year, it comes to training. We're budgeting 12,000 for training next year. Again, 50,000 for scanning. Luke, spoke to Luke about this yesterday. He thinks that next year, we should be able to get that project wrapped up with, with the scanning. So this hopefully is the, next year would be the last year to fund that position for 50,000. Those, actually, those two part-time positions. We want to reanalyze and benchmark our building permit fees next year. The last time we did an increase was 2019. Before that, some of our fees had not been updated in 25 years. I'm not going to wait 25 years to update our fees again. It was pretty crazy to see the numbers where they were back in the 90s to where they were in 2019. But we're going to probably take a look at that next year. That's something we should probably do every five, five to six years anyhow. And then we would like to acquire new automobile. Luke's fleet is very old. Most of his vehicles are hand-me-down vehicles from the police department or public works or engineering. We, I think in his fleet, he only has one vehicle that was bought brand-new. He, he budgets more money for maintenance than he does for gasoline. So we, I know we're bringing in a new fleet manager, and we'll, we'll be working with that position to try to see if we can get some better vehicles for, for Luke and his staff. So for those of you who attended last year's presentation, I gave you an update on the electrical inspection program that the state of North Dakota took over two years ago. And there were some items that they were not doing at that time that we were doing as a staff. To let you know, in 2022, before we gave up that program to the state, we had two full-time electrical inspectors. And they were doing plan reviews. They were doing rough-in inspections. They were enforcing city ordinances. They were available. We provided same-day or following-day service to our customers. And then, of course, they did the final inspections. And last year, at this time last year, we learned that, you know, they were not doing any plan reviews at all. Rough-in inspections were questionable at the time. Today, I think they're doing a much better job at rough-in inspections. We've, we've made that very clear to them, that it's very necessary for them, for them to do those inspections. I've, I've been told that they're, they're doing a much better job in that area this year. They're still not enforcing our city ordinances that we have in place. Availability, availability of inspectors is questionable. It was last year, and sometimes it still is available this, it's, it still stands this year because they only have one inspector on staff. They have one inspector that covers a two-county area, Ward County and another county that's to the north of us. But they are, they are conducting final inspections, but I'm going to talk about how they're doing those final inspections a little bit later. So this is what we learned this year. Sometimes they're, they're not conducting service inspections, and that is required by city code. And the service inspections are the inspections that, where they set up the electrical line from the power line to, to the home or to the business. And that's required by city code, and we've learned that sometimes they're not doing those inspections. They're still not conducting plan reviews. They're still not enforcing city codes. They are approving the final inspections, but they're, sometimes they're doing them despite some obvious safety issues. I'll go into that in the next slide. This is the lack of coverage. This is my biggest concern. It was my biggest concern since day one. You know, in 2022, there were two city inspectors and one inspector covering the two-county area around Ward County and another county. And today, there's only one inspector doing a two-county area altogether. And then there's some communication issues that we're still trying to work out with them. We did notice about a month ago or so that they were issuing electrical certificates for a job that was a major remodel job of a, of a small apartment complex. And they were conducting inspections all the way, and then they notified us of a final inspection. And we didn't even have a building permit issued for that project at all. So Luke and his staff were not even out there to see what was going on during the whole, during the entire project. And they didn't even alert us to that. So it's just kind of, it's just been very difficult for Luke. So can you imagine Luke's workload with the increased number of plan reviews that he's had to take on? And then all the communication issues that he's been having to deal with? It's, if he had hair, he would have pulled it out by now, but he doesn't have any hair. And I told him that yesterday. And another issue I don't have on here was licensing of electricians. We still require in our city code that all electricians be licensed through the city. And according to Luke, yesterday, there's only one electrician that still has not received their license. And I'll forward that on to the state. The state has been very responsive in trying to make sure that any electrician working in city limits is getting licensed through the city. So we're down to one. I think that list was like over like two dozen a couple of months ago. So they've been working to try to get those electricians licensed with the city. Here's an example of a final inspection that was done. This was last week. It happened middle of last week. There was a home that was, that was under construction. You can see in here, the date was July 25th. They just started getting the home framed and working their all, all their way down. So if you see at the bottom there, at the, the bottom remarks under April 29, 2024, that FS stands for a final inspection. And they issued, they, they told Luke that it was okay to issue a C of O on this project, but Luke highlighted for, for us three areas that were very concerning to him. He did not feel comfortable issuing a certificate of occupancy in this situation because they still said, the, the property owner or the electrician still had to provide receptacle for the upstairs bar area. They had to provide in-use cover for outdoor, outdoor deck areas, and they still hadn't installed plates and covers and all devices. There were actual wires hanging out of the wall. And they're saying that it's good for him to issue a C of O. Luke called the inspector and said, you got to go back and make sure that this is, this is finished. He, the inspector actually finally went out and did a second inspection. When we had, and actually approved, you know, the, the electrician had done all this work in time for the second inspection, and they got their C of O. But Luke's staff would have warned him about this, and they never would have issued the final approval under, when, when Luke was running the program. But the state inspector, Luke finds this quite a bit where they're approving final inspections when there's safety concerns. And he, and being the city's building official, if somebody gets injured or hurt, he's afraid of the liability he's going to have by issuing the C of O. So these are just, I just want to give you some examples of what's happening. I know Luke and I did not support transferring this program over to the state, and I just wanted to make you all informed of what we've been experiencing over the last two years. I'm not asking to bring the program back, but I'm certainly asking for any assistance that we can get, the, the inspectors for the state to do the same job the inspectors for the city were doing in 2022. So I'm going to transition over into the planning department real quick, and then I'll stand available for your questions. Last year in the planning department, we wrapped up our conference of plan in May, and then we jumped right back into it with the housing study in June. We hired Stan Tech. They did several focus group meetings, workshops. We even did a community survey. I thought they did a really good job of putting together that study. We conducted 62 development review team meetings last year. And for those of you who are not aware, development review team meeting is where we sit down with an applicant before they begin construction and explain to them all the rules that they have to follow. We make sure that we have representatives from the planning department, inspections department, engineering, fire department, park district, everyone there. The park district has impact fees that, that, that we have to collect. So we, we want, we want to make the applicants aware of upfront what they're required to do. We want to open up that line of communication. We also tape record the meetings. We also put together written minutes and provide them to the, to our customers. And so that way, it hopefully gets their project off in the right direction. I think we do a great job with these meetings, too. 2024, so for this year, we wrapped up the housing study last month. We do have some new staff members, so right now, we're focusing on getting them trained. I'm just doing the work of Jonathan Rosenthal, so I'm doing the work of two people, and I've got three new staff members under me. So for the rest of this year, we're going to focus on getting them trained, getting them acclimated to their jobs and being able to answer questions from customers. You know, we're going to try to get through the construction season. And then after that, then maybe we can start working on some, some special projects. In the past year, you know, we, we have implemented some items of our conference of plan. You know, we now have the housing study. We have the community satisfaction survey completed. We have a downtown outdoor plaza. It's privately, it's a private plaza. It was approved last year by the city council through a PUD. So that, that's another implementation item that's taken care of. And then we've also developed a coordinated highway welcoming signage system. So we've got four items already completed out of like 31 implementation items in our conference of plan. So for 2025, what I want to talk to you about real quickly today is the, the implementation items that we would like to prioritize for 2025. Some of these items may require the, the, the skills and time of a consultant. Some of these items can be accomplished by staff. Some of these items may be very short in length, maybe a few months. Some may take up to a couple of years. So I've highlighted 16 of them for you. I also sent them out to you in an email the other day, and the, and the handout that I gave to you has the, the list of 16 of them. A couple of them, I would recommend you make, I, I would, I think they're too premature to take on right now. We, I would prefer we do them later on down the road. The one that I would recommend that the council take on is LU2, which is establish a new joint powers agreement with Ward County to define extraterritorial boundaries and clearly defined areas where the city intends to provide services. We've actually started some work on this project already. And we would have to, what, basically what it is, is amending our two-mile boundary around the city that where we have zoning and building permit control. When we had our meetings last year with our stakeholders, we learned, like, for example, the, the future site of our sewer plant is not located in our two-mile. It's located in another planning jurisdiction. So I think it's important that we get, get that boundary cleaned up, try to bring that, that site into our, our two-mile jurisdiction. So that way, we have land use authority over that site and not another jurisdiction. There's also a situation where on the west side of the city, our, our two-mile boundary with Burlington goes right through the middle of the, of the youth camp. And we already have sat down with, with officials from Burlington. We agreed that we were just rather just give them that area. It's kind of a pain for them to figure out which side of the boundary their, their camp is on because the east half is in Minot, the west half is in Burlington. And it probably just makes more sense to put that into one jurisdiction. And we, we've agreed with Burlington that we'll just, we would rather just amend the map to give that land to Burlington. So I just want some guy, I'm hoping for two or three projects from the, from the, from the, from the council for, that we can pick to work on next year. Again, these were, these were projects that were identified through stakeholder meetings that our consultant held with pretty much all the council members and stakeholders from throughout the community. We did a survey, an online survey. We had over 1,000 responses to that survey. And we, we also had close to a dozen workshops. So we, we, probably 25% of our budget was public participation for this project. So a lot of these ideas came from the, from the, came from our residents and not just from staff. So I would encourage LU2 as one of the items. And here's, here's a list of more, more items that you can pick from. The two that I would recommend you place as a low priority is PTOOS3, wayfinding for water access trails. We're not close to that yet. We need to do more work on the, on flood control before we even take that one on. And then the other one is, I did here. Oh, PTS, PTOOS1 is providing and enhancing public access from downtown throughout the riverfront trail. We, we haven't built that part of the, of the flood control system yet. So I would, I'd recommend you place that as a low priority as well. But the other ones, I think we can take on next year. So I would encourage your feedback at this time of which projects you'd like for planning staff to undertake in 2025.
Brian, is this, is this complete? Is your presentation complete?
Actually, no, it's not. I have one position request to make, and then it'll be complete.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and complete that, and then we'll just open it up for discussion?
That'll be fine. So for 2025, we do have a new position request. I'd like to hire a second full-time code enforcement officer. By doing that, I would just eliminate the summer help. The summer help's job is to try to help out the code enforcement officer and other planning staff. The summer help is a good position to have. It's nice to have. We usually get a younger person in that position, and they, they tend to do pretty well. The problem is it takes them a while to get trained. And it maybe takes them a month or so to get acclimated to what they need to do. And then two months later, they're gone. So I would prefer we had a full-time, year-round position where we didn't have to worry about training someone every year on how to do their job. Code enforcement was a high priority in the community satisfaction survey. Our current level of service is we respond to complaints. The goal is become more proactive rather than relying on complaints. And by hiring the second officer, maybe they can get out to these problem properties before, before people start calling in to complain about them. I do offer an alternative to this. If you're unable to fund this position full-time, I am open to still eliminating the summer help position and hire a year-round, part-time code enforcement officer as a, as an alternative if you're unable to, to, to meet that response. Unfortunately, according to state law, we can only really collect the amount of the abatements that we're doing. We, we have a contractor that we bring in to clean up these properties. So whatever the contractor builds us is what we have to send to the property owner. So this position would, would be funded through property taxes, unfortunately. And then I have two quick slides. And then I have two quick slides on economic development. I would, I have a request. I'd like to budget $15,000 next year for developer and builder training. This came out of the housing study that was recently completed. The Urban Land Institute provides training for residential land developers. We can bring them in, provide this training to local people to teach them how to become a land developer. The Certified Commercial Investment Institute provides commercial land development training. We can bring them in as well. And then the National Association of Home Builders provides production-level housing construction. Last year, we built roughly 80 housing units or so in this community. The housing study identified that we are going to need to build about 320 housing units a year over the next 10 years to keep up with demand. And that includes any housing in the future where we're still going to lose to flood So right now, we're building at 25% of the level that we really need to be building at. And I think a $15,000 investment in the training Minot residents and other people from this area to learn how to become a developer and develop our community, I think it would go a long way. It's a, I think it'd be a great investment for our community. And then the last thing I want to do, I want to give you a quick update on the facade improvement program. Our current fund balance stands at just under $500,000. That should be enough to fund three or four more projects. I have three applicants that are working with architects right now. The freight house next to the railroad tracks, apartment complex just across the street here, and then a building on Main Street. And then I've got three inquiries from other properties recently, leans jewelry, Ebenezer's nice impressions. So obviously, we're not going to have enough money to fulfill all of their needs. So if you want to continue with the program, we're going to have to fund more money in 2025 to meet their, their needs. So that's my presentation. I thank you for your time. I thank you for your support through the years. I've been here for five years now and I'm happy that we've been able to clean up our zoning ordinance, our comprehensive plan, our housing study. We're gotten a lot done in five years. We still have more work to do. But I do thank you for your support and I really hope that you really take into consideration the needs of my staff. We really need, we really need a second code enforcement officer. At my previous job in Idaho, when my city hit 50,000 in population, we actually brought in a part-time code enforcement officer. We went from one to one and a half. Then when we had 60,000 in population, we transitioned that part-time position to a full-time position up to two. Trust me, I think there's enough work around here that we can, we need a second code enforcement officer. I think our biggest enemy here is the wind. Anytime you have a windy day, it just blows garbage very easily throughout the community. Makes it difficult for my staff to keep up with that need. The last city I worked in was nowhere near as windy as this. And I noticed after a strong windstorm, you can look around the community and you can see the garbage that is, that's accumulated because of the wind. And I think we need that, that extra amount of service, you know, manpower to be able to get that job done, to get the community cleaned up. And then again, you know, I appreciate all the work that Luke has done over the last couple of years. When I promoted him in 2019, he was capable of doing all the plan reviews by himself. We were pretty slow back then. But we have really picked up a lot over the last couple of years with our number of permits that we're issuing. I think our incentive programs are really starting to work here as well. We're starting, which is great. I mean, we want to see the city grow. We want to see the city prosper. But I don't want to see that done at the expense of my staff. So I really hope that you can help fund this commercial plans examiner position. So with that, I stand available for your questions. I really want your feedback on comprehensive plan projects for next year.
Any questions from council members? Scott?
What is he first? He's got one.
What's that?
Okay. First off, Brian, how do our, our fees compare to other regional governments when you're talking about the fees for the planning department and possibly increasing it?
We do track those fees and I know Luke tracks his fees on the building side quite a bit. On the planning side, we updated our fees about two or three years ago. I think we're in pretty good shape with those fees. When you compare planning to inspections, planning doesn't bring in nowhere near the amount of fees. You can quadruple the fees in planning, it still isn't enough to pay for the, all the services we provide in the department. So I'm not proposing we do that. I don't want to do that. I want to stay competitive with the other cities and the state charge. And, but I know Luke follows the other cities as well. It's been almost five years since we've updated the building permit fees. So it's, it's time for us to take a look at those and we'll, we'll do that next year. But again, Luke needs to have the time to be able to do that. He doesn't have the time to do that right now. He's just too busy with his, his plan reviews.
So you talked about your planning development review teams that you do, which I think is a fantastic idea because one of the things I think we hear from time to time is Minot isn't a great place to do business in. And some of that is hyperbole and some of it is areas for improvement. When you have those review teams, what are the most common myths that you're busting during that? What are the most common struggles you're coming up against?
Good question. It varies. Some of them may be federal requirements like stormwater requirements. Some of them could be building code requirements. And then again, all the codes that we've adopted are adopted by just about every city in this country. So that's a, that's a myth we try, that we try to break down is that you can go to Fargo, you can go to Boston, and they're going to have the same codes in those cities that we have here. So that, when it comes to myths, that's a, that's a good one there. They, they think that the city may be too restrictive in some areas when we actually have the same codes other cities have, so.
You mentioned that we've had 80, 80 housing units added in the last year. Is that an uptick from previous years?
Yeah. Yeah, the last few years before that, the numbers were hovering around maybe 50 or so.
What do you think created that uptick? Because we hear, again, we hear all about the economic indicators and how tough everything is, but something is changing. What was that tipping point to get us to here?
I think part of it is due to the adoption of the, of the property tax exemption program that the city council adopted last year. Some of it may be due to that. Market demands obviously as well. It's really expensive to build a home today compared to even just five years ago. Construction prices have gone up, you know, labor prices have gone up. I think we need to provide as much assistance as possible to help encourage more growth and development in our community because if we don't, I'd hate to see what would happen. I think our numbers would go way down. We certainly wouldn't need a commercial plans examiner probably if we quit providing these incentives. I think construction will go down. I think, I think that you wouldn't see a lot of growth happening in our community right now.
Which is why I think, you know, looking at, at the issues around, we are seeing an uptick and perhaps some of our incentive programs have helped. I would also say that, you know, looking at your list of potential priorities, the number H two on here, which is promote existing grant and loan programs that assist with rehabilitation of existing housing stock to broaden accessibility for residents. I think that that's along that lines of the things that we can do to sort of push things along a little bit. It might not be the, you know, it might not be a bulldozer pushing it. It might be a six-year-old pushing it, but at least something pushing it, so.
And Alderman, Berliname, that would require a consultant. We would have to, I would like to work with an outside company to be able to, to provide that. It's more of a marketing project more than anything else. We can bring in a marketing team to help do the, it shouldn't cost a lot of money, but it's something that I'll, I'll need the assistance of a consultant.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Steve?
I have about seven questions and/or comments to follow up on. First question, you mentioned that we got downgraded because the plans, people weren't spending enough time in the field. Was that the ISO inspection?
Yes.
For the department? Just wanted to be sure. Okay. Which has a direct impact on the, on the fees people pay for insurance?
Yes, it does.
Second question was, in terms of the state electrical inspector, I know we had significant debate about that when it came up. And one of the, and I'm, given the problems you've cited, I'm a little curious as to why you're not recommending we go back to having our own?
Great question, Alderman Padrigula. You know, that decision was not made by staff.
I know, we made it and I'm wondering if I made a mistake in going for it.
I would prefer that, I would prefer that if you see an electrician or a contractor out when you're walking down the sidewalk or out shopping or something, ask them how it's going and get their feedback. Luke gets, he gets quite a few complaints from people and he has to be the middle man to try to get everything fixed. It's just, these kinds of things weren't happening when the city was running the project. That's when you bring in a third party to do these inspections, they're going to do it their way. And, you know, they made promises that they're not living up to. And I would, I would appreciate to bring, I would really appreciate to bring it back. It would, it would, the dysfunctions we deal with would certainly be controllable and Luke would be able to control those much better. We didn't have these problems before 2022.
But yet you're not asking for a position?
That's a, that's a decision the council will have to make.
You know, I, you know, I like the idea of asking people, but it's not a popularity contest. Or like yesterday, we were talking about employee satisfaction and what benefits they say they want. I think we have professional expertise. We have policymaking responsibilities that go beyond that. I mean, asking people what they want is important and we need to listen, but I don't think we run things based on a popularity contest. So if five contractors say they're fine with it and five say they don't, you know, I think it still comes down to us. So, you know, I, you know, if you're not asking for it, it's hard to give something to you. But, you know, I think you've highlighted the issues. And for the benefit of the public and for the candidates, as I said, we had considerable debate about this. And the thing that swung us, I think Paul was the one who led this and I went along with it, was the idea we'd save $200,000. And now we're seeing it's causing a lot of inconvenience and disruption and there's some safety issues coming up. Those are hard to quantify. If the house burns down because the electrical wiring wasn't done well, I mean, obviously you can quantify that, but in terms of the hassles for your staff, the workload, the inconvenience to developers, there's a cost to that, too. And I think it's very tempting. It's a siren song of saving money.
Actually, I think the savings was closer to $100,000.
I'm sorry. Well, it was, it was a significant chunk of money.
Because by giving up the program, we're also giving up the fees that were collected. So I think, I think the cities, the city was about, is about 50/50, closer to 50/50.
Okay. Thank you for correcting me. The other thing I'd point out about the development review teams, I respectfully disagree with you on that. I've sat in on a few of those and it was not just about telling people what rules they have to follow. It was a collaborative partnership. They were problem solving. Our staff would say, gee, have you thought about this? And it didn't have anything to do with the rules. It was their experience of helping other developers. Or they said, gee, so-and-so did this in their development. Have you thought about that? Or this might save you some money. Or this might, you know, eliminate some problems down the road. So it wasn't a matter of saying, you do this or you have to follow that at all. I was very impressed by the collaborative nature of that. I think it really helped the developers out. So it wasn't, it wasn't, respectfully, I disagree with you, it wasn't just a rule following enterprise. I wanted to compliment you, though, for giving us that list of priorities and explaining, you know, what the pros and cons were of each. And I think several other department heads have done that and that really helps make our job much easier. If you lay out the menu and you present an analysis of what the pros and the cons are for each, you know, asking for our input and setting up a timeframe, not just a priority list, but at what point in the future should we be doing this or considering it? And the last thing I wanted to compliment you on and other department heads, too, is presenting staffing data on other, and numbers from other cities. Your professionals, you deal with this day in and day out. You have this on the top of your head. You have an idea of who your counterparts are in other cities. We don't. So I think having that context, having that sense of how other people are doing it, again, not necessarily we have to follow it or go by their numbers, but I think that's a very important perspective. And also I think helps citizens understand, you know, how complicated running a government is and gives them a sense of where we are compared to others. Because it's easy to overlook, it's easy not to understand that context, and the context is very important. So I really appreciate you and the other people who've come before you giving us those kinds of numbers.
Paul, you said you had nothing to, nothing to add?
I don't have anything at this point.
Okay. Steve? I'm sorry, one last comment or one last question. How's the search for an economic development director coming at this point? I know you mentioned in your request that you have some funds.
I think Harold's going to talk about economic development next.
Okay.
I'll let him address the council on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Brian, before we get, move on to the candidates and their questions or comments. When you talked about the service, electrical, the service inspections?
Mm-hmm.
Is, you said that it's required by city ordinance. Is that, is that also a state regulation? I'm just wondering if, are there some efficiencies that we can build in by saying, look, if the state doesn't require it, why does the city have to require it?
I think I'm going to have Luke Tillman answer that question. I think he's more aware of that than I am. I don't think, if it were a state requirement, I would imagine they would be doing the inspections on a regular basis. But I'll have Luke take that one.
Mayor Ross, to address that question, it is in the N E C as a, as a code that the service is inspected and that's why we put it in as an ordinance to clarify it years ago, apparently. Now that the code has been updated so many times, we're on the 2020 national electrical code, it is in there. The unfortunate fact is that the state electrical board believes that since they are licensed electrician, they don't need to look at it, which I guess I have a hard time. I won't be able to explain that. But we, as city inspectors, did, and multiple code violations were found during those inspections during that time as well. So to me, it's a safety thing. If you're, if the beginning of your electrical power is wrong, the whole house is wrong. So it's a safety thing. And when, when I'm asked to sign off on a certificate of occupancy, I'm saying, this building is safe to occupy. When I get a list of 10 code violations, we're not code compliant, I can't sign off on that, you know? So when I had, when I was in control of the staff, I could send them back and say, we're not signing off on that, but now that, gone, so.
So you're saying that it is a requirement, but the state is not fulfilling that requirement when they?
That is correct.
Jumping over to, and this may be, Brian, this may be, jumping over to the city licensing of electricians. Is that, and I'm just kind of thinking, was that put in place during the boom, during the, I mean, is, I guess what I'm saying, is that outdated? Do we still need that?
So here in the city of Minot, we've licensed our tradesmen for as long as I can remember. I've been working in the city for 25 years, so. Master electricians, master plumbers, mechanical, the state does not provide mechanical licensing, so we do that on our own, which is important because it's our ventilation, our breathing systems and gas, gas lines. So traditionally, the city has always wanted to know who is working in our city, that they're qualified.
Okay. Thank you. Candidates, do you have anything? Mike?
Brian, I just had one thing because I've, I've had this discussion with a few people. Back to your L U number two, which is the extraterritorial boundaries.
Yes.
Can you, can you just give me a quick overview? I think I have some ideas for why we do that in the first place and then just comment on when people say, look, I live in the two mile, I am subject to Minot rules, but can't vote for leadership. And so just those basic ideas.
Yeah, state law gives cities the ability to go two miles outside of their boundaries to enforce just zoning, subdivision and building permits. That's pretty much the jurisdiction that we can enforce. We don't enforce any nuisances like garbage and trash. That's, that's not in our jurisdiction. I think the state legislature put that together because they realized that there's not a lot of planners and building officials in the rural counties of our, of our state. And they thought it would probably be more efficient just to let the cities handle those areas. Plus, I think it's wise to be able to do that because it allows us to enforce the city's rules so as we grow outward over time, that those properties meet our requirements. So it's, I think it's a good planning tool to have. It's not really a political tool, but I would, I think what the state has done is, was a wise decision in giving us the ability to at least make sure that as we, we develop and grow outward, that at least those properties are going to be, you know, be able to meet our standards or for, for any future needs that we may have.
And just to follow up on that, as I looked at the law, it's written that you can't, we can. So, and it looked to me like most of the major cities in the So, and it looked to me like most of the major cities in the state are doing so.
Yes, they are.
And they're, you know, so in Minot right now, you talked about some adjustments to it. We essentially, we go to the extent of the law in most cases, where we're doing two miles in most directions, although like you said, there's a bunch of that checkerboard stuff, I think to the northeast is the main, the main issue there.
Yeah.
So, so as we clean that up, do you, do you see that as the correct strategy long term? I mean, if we're thinking about growth, I think that was what I envisioned, the reasoning why was, as we were to annex portions of the country, they're already up to code, would be the idea, right?
Yes.
And we're not having to retrofit or go back and do some of those things.
Exactly.
And so then just to address the one last part, which was, what, what, what would your answer be to those that say, I realize you said it's just subject to a couple things, but that is kind of the idea, you know, I, I'm subject to what they're saying, but I can't vote for town for mayor. And so how do we, how do we deal with that question?
You know, we, when we worked on our comprehensive plan, we made sure to invite people who lived in the two mile to be part of the planning process. We opened our doors to them and we invited, we, when we worked with our consultants, we made sure when they put out their notices for advertisement, that we wanted the people in the two mile to be able to come in and participate in our planning process as well. And they're, they're just as much customers to us as city residents, and if they have complaints, they'll, they'll complain to us as well. We, we listen to everyone that we serve. So we have changed our rules and our zoning ordinance over the last few years to accommodate some of their needs. We're open minded to that and we treat them like, like they're city residents.
Okay. And then just one last follow up on the, on the very end of that. How, you mentioned that the legislature was thinking, you know, maybe the rural areas weren't being served. How, how good a job is Ward County doing? Do they, does Ward County have a lot of the same things for areas outside the two mile that make Minot maybe unique, where Ward County's doing a great job?
I know Ward County has one full-time planner right now, and that's it. So they have very limited staffing. They don't even have a code enforcement officer on staff. So I think their planner does all of that. They're pretty busy.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Harold, do you want to?
Wanted an opportunity to respond a little bit to Mr. Blessum's question. This is a common question, it's been discussed. It was also an issue at the last legislative session and the city provided some testimony with regards to some of that. It sounds a little bit ironic, but we also, we often hear the, the political mantra of taxation without representation. Actually, here we're doing it in reverse. We're doing representation without taxation. So the purposes of the two mile jurisdiction, as was explained, and I, and I think you understand it is, is to be proactive that as the community grows, that there are certain things that can potentially represent a significant tax burden to the taxpayers, that those are planned and addressed prior to annexation. So spacing of houses as far as density, inclusion of streets, the specification of which those streets are built. You know, we took you on a tour yesterday of a development within our community, that those streets, while they were built at the specifications at the time, weren't really the proper specification, and now the taxpayers are likely going to bear the burden of redoing all those streets. And that's the concept we're dealing with in that two mile jurisdiction, is making sure that that infrastructure, when it's installed, is done in a way that as it potentially transitions to being within city limits, meets some minimum standard, that the taxpayers aren't bearing future burden of cost of fixing that. But the key piece there is the representation without taxation. We do not provide police services, fire service unless it's a mutual aid, we are not the immediate response. We don't do nuisance code abatement, those kinds of things. Our, our jurisdiction is limited to that zoning, which helps bridge that gap of potentially future coming into the city limits and meeting those bare minimum requirements and the potential future investment of cost. And I think that's the, the main issue. I find it interesting and ironic, this conversation, because North Dakota traditionally has been sympathetic to some of these arguments. We hear it a lot of times with regards to how much the city of Minot bears in costs regionally with regards to Nas and those kinds of things, because we're the regional hub, so everyone comes and spends money and we get sales tax revenue off of the region, therefore we should be paying for regional projects. Well, we have a lot of people that go to Bismarck and spend money, right? We don't get any funding from, from the city of Bismarck to help meet our local needs. And likewise, we don't get to vote in Bismarck elections or Fargo elections because our citizens are making that transition back and forth. We're responsible for our jurisdictional boundaries and by state law, it requires that anyone that lives within our boundaries that's eligible to vote, votes in ours, and we don't allow people outside of our jurisdictions to vote within our jurisdiction. Same as we don't let people from South Dakota that are residents of South Dakota to vote in North Dakota elections. It's the same concept here. Even though we're close in proximity with this two mile jurisdiction, we have a little bit of overlap, but not full representation. So I just wanted to provide a more comprehensive answer.
Really just formalizes the overlap, is what it does, right?
Correct.
And the other important point is they're not subject to our levies. So we're, they're not paying.
City don't pay city property tax.
Scott?
Brian, maybe you can refresh my memory. I'm going to ask you about the state electrical board. When they had their meetings and stuff, from what I remember watching them, I paid attention to it, they committed to us that they would have electrical inspector for the city of Minot. Is that not correct? That's what I remember and we can go back and listen to that.
I think they committed to have one for the county, I think, but Luke and Harold were, were in those meetings as well. That was a couple of years ago.
Okay.
But they, they promised that they would do same day or next day services, just like we were providing.
Okay. That's what I remember from the city council meeting.
It's tough for one person to cover an area of that size and go from one area to the other and try to do inspections in one day, you know? It's, you're an inspector, you understand what I'm talking about.
I do it all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and then I just wanted to mention on that, they, you know, it was talked about that we saved $100,000. I don't believe that to be true. One reason why is because at that city council meeting, that $100,000 was moved somewhere else. That's savings, but I, I don't see, and I'm not a big proponent of just adding staff, you know, to city, but I do believe there are places that we need it and something like this is a, is a public safety issue. So I, I just, I don't think we saved $100,000.
Mark?
I guess the other question I have with regard to this topic is, the reason that we ended up with the state doing the inspections was because the two inspectors that we had bailed and left. So a question that occurs to me is, what's reality here? If, if we added positions to have electrical inspectors, are we going to have any? I mean, is it going to be another situation where we're just dealing with unfilled positions that we, we don't have anybody to fill?
The biggest challenge with the electrical inspection positions, and it always has been this way, this is nothing that's just recent, is that the state electrical inspectors make significant more money than the city inspectors made. And I think it was closer to somewhere around $10 an hour difference. So typically, the state would pretty, pretty much pick up the best inspectors from the big cities from throughout the state and hire them to, to work for their organization. I know over a 10-year period, we lost two inspectors to the state. I know other, the other big cities have lost some of their inspectors to the state as well, because of the pay differential. That will always will be a challenge, I believe. So even if we do pick up the program, we're going to, I'm afraid we may just become a training ground for future electrical inspectors. That is a challenge.
Scott?
Real quick, I wish that was the way with plumbing inspectors.
Anything further for Brian? Lisa?
Does he want our, do you want our recommendations at this point too?
Yep.
Not yet. We're going to, what, oh, recommendations for his priorities?
Yep.
Sure, if you'd like.
And mine are simple. It would be LU two and LU three, because I think that there certainly does need to be more of a focus on the extraterritorial. And then I believe that if I understand LU three right, that would be regarding some of these islands that we've talked about in the past. And even though I think we have a verbal agreement right now, I don't think that it's been formalized and, and the interpretation may change from city council to county commission members sitting. And so if there's more focus there and more clarification, I think it'd be helpful.
Okay. Lisa, I think before we go any further, that also kind of falls into budget priorities. So I think for, thank you for adding that.
Okay.
But I think what we'll do is, if there are no further comments or questions of Brian, what we'll do is we'll, okay, we'll move on to economic development before we have a short recess and then come back as the council to further discussion. So is there anything further for Brian?
Can I just add one?
Go ahead.
Brian, on the, you know, it's, it's not up on the screen, if it's easy to go back there, we could, but the $15,000 you had looked at for, for doing some local training, the thing that comes to my mind is, is why do we not have local private entities doing exactly that? Whether it's the chamber, whether it's the association of builders, why is that not happening there? And is that a more appropriate place for that to happen? It's not a crazy amount, you know, there might be some great things that happen, but man, it feels like that's what those organizations are for.
Yeah. Good point. Yeah, I think the reason why it's not happening is, I think people are, the, development is a very risky thing to get into, land development especially, and I think people don't want to do it because they're, they're not educated in how to do it. I think, and whatever local resources we can use towards this, I would certainly support that. But I think by bringing in these organizations, I think we would get a really good turnout. And I think we can probably train some local people, become developers and actually help grow our community.
Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Harold, did you, is that, yeah, okay.
I don't have any formal presentation with regards to economic development. I will respond to Alderman Pardergill's question about an update on where we're at with the economic development position. We did go through a process of accepting applications. We did invite some semifinalists, whittled that down to three finalists that we invited in for interviews. Two of those accepted the invitation, so we interviewed those two. One candidate was deemed to be a good fit for our community and our organization, the other one was not. And the one that was deemed to be a good fit withdrew their candidacy before we could negotiate an offer of, of position. So currently, that position continues to remain open until filled. I did have one individual reach out to me this week, I have an appointment with them tomorrow actually, to visit with regards to the position. I have not had an opportunity to review their resume or their credentials to know whether or not they're qualified to do the position or not. For me, the important thing is, is to make sure that we have the right person with the right skills and the right personality in that position. I'm not just going to fill the position to fill the position.
I'm not suggesting that.
And, and so we are being patient and waiting for the right person to apply for that position. I think Brian and I, even though it adds some workload to us, are capable of pulling that weight until the right person is found. Kind of segwaying a little bit into the importance of the position though, I do believe that the position is still needed by the city. Mainly being, you know, we're, we've been talking a lot over the last couple of days about reducing tax burden, not increasing property tax and those kinds of things. If we're going to wean off of property tax, we have to be, become more dependent on sales tax, which means that we need to encourage growth in areas that generate sales tax for our community for the future. That's, in my mind, is what that economic development position is, should be geared towards. This is why we have the, the contract with Retail Coach to help us recruit in retail and, and commercial development within our community to help generate that sales tax in the future. We can talk about that in the future. I will tell you right now that even though I've worked with Retail Coach in two communities for the last probably five, six years, I don't know that I'm super happy with the, the service we're getting there. I think it may be time to re, to rebid that out this year and see if there's other alternatives. Brian will be going to ICSC, that's the International Council of Shopping Centers. It's kind of the big retail recruitment event of the country, actually internationally. It happens in Vegas every year. Those are the opportunities that we have to sit down with potential retailers. We're having success with interest. I think where we're struggling with Retail Coach is the follow-through. And, and I've had that conversation with them and they're not responding in accordance with expectation. So it might be time to, to rebid that and see if there's anyone else that's willing to be more responsive for the community of Minot with regards to that. But again, back to the concept of, the city needs to have that position. One, we have several key programs that we're doing, the downtown Renaissance Zone, the facade improvement program. I would argue that we're seeing the benefits and the impact of that, those investments in our downtown, in its quality, and it's helping the city match the grassroots energy that's coming out of downtown and the private investment in there. But again, that sales tax generation is going to be key. You know, one of the challenges with, so really the city has three things to rely on for revenue. Property tax, sales tax and service fees. Property tax is the most reliable, it's predictable, right? Very seldom do people not pay their, their property tax. It's probably 97, 98% effective in doing that, and it's predictable. And when we're providing services like police and fire and those kinds of things, we need the stability of that type of revenue. Sales tax has the potential to generate significant amount of revenue, but it's also extremely volatile. It's subject to the economy and spending habits. And so when you run into a time of the country right now where you're seeing inflation and those kinds of things and everything costs more money, people tend to spend, well, they're spending the same amount, but they're buying less product, their buying power decreases and become more conservative and spend less money. And, and then revenues go down. And if you're dependent on supporting services like police and fire and street maintenance and those kinds of things off of sales tax, when those revenues go down, you have no choice but to cut expense. We have to have a balanced budget. We can temporarily maybe use some reserves to cover that gap, but we can't do that for an extended period of time. And so, and sales tax typically when it dips, doesn't rebound immediately, it takes some time to, to adjust back up over time. So it's not as reliable, but it does generate a significant amount of revenue. The other thing with sales tax is that it's not just our local citizens paying it. Again, we're a regional hub, so as other, as other people come to our community, we have the ability to bring revenue from outside our community to help support the costs of our community. That's one of the strengths of sales tax. One of the deficiencies that I've always argued against sales tax is, is that it's what I call a blind tax. I would, I would challenge anyone to tell me how much money you spent in sales tax in 2023. So we could raise a half cent sales tax and that could potentially take $250 a year out of the pocket of a citizen, but they're unaware of that. But when we raise a property tax and we take another $50 a year out of property tax, everyone knows exactly what that means because they get an annual bill with that. And we spend a lot of time focused on that. And so there's pros and cons to each revenue stream. And in my opinion, having a diversity of revenue is important to a community. And again, I think that, and maybe I'm going a little out of bounds here with regards to the property tax, but with, with what's being discussed across the state right now. I agree, there should be some efficiencies and maybe some better uses of that. Complete elimination of it, I think is detrimental to communities. But I'm here to talk about economic development, I'm not here to talk about that. So I'll, I'll in my comments there. The importance with economic development is we continue to strive to try to drive retail and commercial growth within our community to help drive future revenues for sales tax so we can wean dependency off of property tax. And we have significant projects, the things of concern for me going forward, and we talked a little bit about this last night with my presentation, projects like the tracks, the central garage development, the in-building and those kinds of things. Those are important not only for the economic reasons, but also for the, the cultural and the competitive reasons for our community and attracting future generations to our community. Those projects financially in Minot right now are difficult to do. Because investors typically want to invest money where they get their biggest return on investment. At the end of the day, they are in it for a profit. And I don't think it's the city's responsibility to make sure that they are guaranteed a certain amount of profit, but I think it's reasonable for us to understand that they do have to make some money off of it. But, you know, again, talking to one of the investors with one of the projects in town, he said, you know, we're, we're Minot people wanting to invest in making Minot better, but if I was to do it strictly from a business transaction standpoint, it's smarter for me and my investors to go invest that money in other communities that are hotter right now because I can get bigger return on investment for that money versus doing it in Minot. So it's programs like TIF and the Renaissance Zone and those kinds of things that help close that gap a little bit, to help encourage those developers to help encourage those developers to make those investments within our community. I think that who was it that did the presentation? Was it the Assistant's Office that did the presentation on the? No, maybe it was Brian at the council meeting Monday night with regards to the Renaissance Zone. That's where it was. You know, the the slide on what the property was worth at the time, before the Renaissance Zone was involved versus what it was worth afterwards. This is in essence an investment into the future. We're trying to invest to increase the quality and the value of our community that creates an economy and a scale that, over time, lessens the tax burden for everybody. But at the same time, creates a better quality community from a quality of life standpoint for everybody as well. So projects like the tracks and the in-building and the central garage and those kinds of things are bringing new mixed-use development concepts to our community that are being highly successful and highly sought after in other communities that are affecting the decisions of future generations and those younger generations of what community they want to live in. And so by by encouraging and helping these types of projects happen within Minot, while we're a long ways from being able to compete head to head with a Fargo, help close that gap a little bit and help us to have less negative effects from that. It helps make our community one that that people want to live in. So now, ultimately, it's your decision as the council as far as what the balance is in there, as far as what kind of investments and what kind of participation we have in those. But those are tried and true concepts that are happening across the country. And we, as a community, can choose not to do that. That's within our purview, that's within your authority as a council and as a community to make that decision. But I think over time, what you'll find is if we choose not to participate in those, we will fall further and further behind. And communities around us will get better and stronger. So Bismarck, Fargo, Grand Forks are not hesitating to do these types of programs. And I would argue, I think you can see the proof in the pudding. Look at how much West Fargo has grown over the last ten years. Look how much Fargo's grown over the last ten years. Look how Grand Forks is changing and growing. And the proof is in the pudding that those investments are making a difference. We see it here locally downtown. What is the difference that the Facade Improvement Program, the Renaissance Zone, have made throughout the throughout the downtown area, right? This is part of the reason that some of these external developers and investors are interested in investing in our downtown. They see that we're making the commitment and investment into our community and they know what that will mean in the in the long run and they want to be a part of investing in that. So anyway, for not having a prepared presentation on economic development, I think we need to continue to focus on those. My other caveat I would have with economic development, and we don't have complete control on this, but I think we do have a role to play, and that is what Trinity does with their old buildings here downtown. That's going to have a major impact into our downtown and to our community as a whole. I would hope that we don't want to repeat the same issues of the in-building and waiting twenty, twenty-five years before we come up with a solution and allow that to deteriorate. We do have, I think it's June thirteenth, we will be taking the council through some tours of the Trinity facilities, which will include the old building and the new building. Because I want you to be able to see, just in the short period of time that that's been closed, how much it's deteriorating and how quickly. Because it's rapidly having some deterioration and some challenges to it. So I think that'll be a major economic role that, well, I don't know that I agree that the city has the full responsibility of solving that problem. I do believe that we should be a partner and a part of that solution. So with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Eve? Thank you for bringing up the Trinity thing, because that's one thing that constituents have been asking me about fairly regularly. What is the city going to do with the Trinity property? And I explained to them that it's not the city's property. And I explained to them, we have economic development programs like TIF and Renaissance Zone that can assist developers. Beyond that, what what can we tell people who ask about that?
Well, ironically, two o'clock this afternoon, I have a meeting with the EPA. The the council agreed that
I mentioned that.
We, as the city, have access to request resources from the EPA to do a phase one, phase two assessment of that building, which we applied for. That has been granted, so my meeting today at two o'clock is basically administrative meeting or coordinating to to do those two phases. So that's one way that the city can, it doesn't cost us any money, the federal government's paying.
So before we can do anything, you need to know what's there.
Yeah, that's to assess whether or not there's any hazardous materials in there. Is there lead-based paint? Is there asbestos, those kinds of things? And so phase one is identified, if there's a potential phase two is to actually test it to verify if it is or not. And then that'll give us a cost estimate, there is potential for a phase three. Then if there is some identified, we could request resources from the EPA to remediate that potentially for the future. But we have to do phase one, phase two before we get there. So the city is cooperating in that. Because the more of these barriers that we check off and get out of the way, the more likely that we can move forward with another solution, whether that's a developer being interested in doing it. You know, with the in-building, you know, our TIF was based off of the removal of asbestos through the building. It was a three million dollar cost for asbestos removal. And that's what the city agreed to pay for through the TIF. So to remove that barrier, hopefully with the Trinity building, because it's a hospital and an old somewhat public facility, maybe it'll qualify for those resources from the federal government to pay for it versus the city having to do a TIF or something like that. But regardless of what the the solution is going forward, whether that's repurposing it or demolition, that phase one, phase two and those hazardous materials have to be addressed and removed because those represent a cost, no matter what your alternative is. So we're trying to be proactive and take care of those issues in advance as quickly as possible. My hope and my goal personally is that we have a plan of what to do with that facility within the next five years. What role the city plays in that, I don't know yet. But, you know, at least having some conversations and have a plan for what needs to happen with that and a plan of attack.
Thank you.
You have other comments or questions? Scott?
Harold, with the economic, sorry, I want to make sure I get the title correctly here, Economic Development Administrator Position. And and I apologize, normally I would have probably talked to you about this privately, but well, I thought about it last night and haven't had a chance. So you you talked about when we were doing our budget tour history about how the PIO officer became the community engagement or communication engagement specialist and how that job title made a little bit of a difference. And it got me thinking about with with the economic development position. Have you explored the possibility of revamping the kind of, I don't know, maybe either the title for that position or the expectations that you're looking for for that position, knowing that we're not necessarily finding candidates that that are meeting all the qualifications? But as you said, and I think right when you said, we're looking for a certain personality, we're looking for certain skill sets, perhaps more so than experience. So have you explored maybe being a little more creative with that in order to get that right person that for that position?
I think we talked about it briefly, but I don't know that we've made any significant changes to that. The the challenge is, is that you know, we were we were talking last night and Mr. Samuelson asked a great question of when we were talking about code enforcement, what does code enforcement mean to you? But we can ask the same question about economic development. What does economic development mean to you? And that means multiple different things. Economic development is a complex concept that involves many things, including our community of Minot. We have several economic development partners that all play different roles, right? And properly, you know, we rely on MACDC to be the lead and the expert when it comes to manufacturing, industrial and military economic development within our community. We have the Service-Based and Planning Council that provides some some support and and plays a role in that. So from the city's standpoint, one is that position is meant to be an effective partner with those entities. Let them lead, but we provide support and coordination. You know, if someone wants to come in and look at manufacturing, they're going to have questions about what kind of water capacity do we have? How close is the sewer line? Do we have no sewer capacity to meet their needs, those kinds of things? So the city has a responsibility to be at the table to answer some of those questions and help make sure that that works where we can for those. But MACDC leads on those conversations and I would envision this economic development position being the city's representative at the table to be able to do that. And then focusing on our specific economic development programs with the Renaissance Zone, the Facade Improvement Program, our our efforts in retail recruitment, those kinds of things. So whether or not that needs to be changed in title or job description, Brian and I kind of looked through the job description before we posted it. We made what tweaks we felt were appropriate to it at that time. Yeah, there's a possibility that we could look at that, I don't know what we would title it. Some of this too is trying to put a title out there that people are going to pay attention to when they're looking at job boards. And but maybe that's something we can look at a little bit.
And I just think that in today's workforce with the the flexibility of everything else and every, anything that you can do like that to be competitive and ensure that you're not putting, you know, maybe the job just sounds too intimidating to somebody that maybe doesn't quite match up experience and education-wise, but somebody that could do that job. So just just something to throw out as a suggestion. And and along that lines, I think that going along with the conversations that Mr. Billingsley talked about with, sorry, I I don't have, I can't find it right now on my notes, but when you have the the group of people that come together and talk about planning and stuff like that, I think that something around that with economic development is appropriate too. Again, going back to the things that we hear from constituents, sometimes we hear it's not a great place to do business, or I want to apply for all this, you know, magic fun dollars and nobody will give it to me. And part of that process is, I think, is there's a lack of information. So being able to sit down with a bunch of subject matter experts and talk through this. Is that a tool that you think that this, that we should be playing a bigger role in or what are your thoughts on that?
I do believe that the intent of when that, as I was, as I understand, I wasn't here when the position was created. But as I understand it, that was one of the impetuses of creating that position, was to sit in those meetings and be the perspective of economic development internally for the city and the city staff, that as we're sitting in those development review team meetings and those kinds of things, that we have somewhere there that's trying to be the translator, so to speak, between the developer and the staff, that if there's ways that we can adjust our perspective or adjust our codes or our processes to be more development-friendly, that position was to be the the translator and the facilitator of that type of conversation internally with staff. And I agree that that's important. I think you get some of that with Brian and I. But Brian and I are also busy with a lot of other things. And so I can't give a hundred percent of my time to economic development and neither can Brian. So having someone that's dedicated to that specifically, that's trained and has expertise, that Brian and I have the faith and trust in to represent us in that capacity is is why I continue to support the need for the position.
And I agree, I I think that even in, you know, within my work, within engagement, within the community and stuff like that, we see in talking to potential business owners or potential entrepreneurs, you'll hear, you know, they oftentimes will go to one source and and look at that almost as if it's gospel, but that source either A may not be knowledgeable about everything or sometimes have a, you know, if I'm going to one lender and that lender's trying to get my business, they might not tell me about a better program down the road. Some are wonderful at it, some maybe not, or maybe they just don't know. So I think being able to get as many voices together to help out potential entrepreneurs, the the better that we can help with that. So I I think there's an extreme value in that. Obviously, when we come to economic development, it comes around to workforce development. And of course, to me, a cornerstone of workforce development is childcare. Have you, in this process of with this economic development staff, has that been part of the conversation during the interviewing? How, what are your thoughts on how we can incorporate that so that, again, and and I don't think it's talked about enough, and I will continue to push for this, is if 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 somebody wants to start up a a childcare, if they want to expand childcare and they don't have support, and you sat in on our committee and you heard that from childcare providers consistently, how can this role currently or in the future help out potential childcare entrepreneurs?
Sure. So having been invited to participate with the committee that discussed that, I think I understand the the recommendation. And I don't know that I have a problem with this position, spending some of this time helping be somewhat of a connector. Maybe not the subject matter expert in it, but know where the resources are to help connect somebody to those resources, whether that's at the state or their local level. I think I'm, I I can support that. You know, providing some information on a website is pretty low hanging fruit. That doesn't cost us a lot of money or energy to be able to do that, I don't have a problem with that. You know, maybe trying to help connect those dots and and schedule meetings to encourage conversation until it gets to a point that it it gets enough of a foundation and support that that's being addressed without the city playing a major role in it, I can I can see that. It is a workforce issue. But to be honest, just personal opinion, at the risk of maybe diminishing or or minimizing that, I think the city needs to focus on the services we provide, police, fire, streets, codes, those kinds of things. We can be a partner at the table to discuss those, but I don't know that it's appropriate for the city to take the major lead or even the financial responsibility of trying to fix that problem. I think that, I think the private sector needs to figure out how to fix that. Now, if there's things we can do from a code standpoint, or those, some of those things, or maybe even some temporary investment to help get the momentum going on that, then maybe the city plays a role there. But I don't see the city playing a a role in a long-term solution for that.
Well, and and there's a reason I haven't, you know, even though this is a major topic, I even brought it up until today. Because I I agree that I don't think it's the role of the city to do everything, but I I agree with what you just said. I think that there are some economic development tools that we can encourage those those folks to take advantage of. And I do think that there's a role that we can do within existing infrastructure to to provide support. So I I also want to kind of finalize by saying, or reiterating something that you said. And, you know, when you talked about how other communities have have taken advantage of economic development tools for significantly longer than Minot has. And they're now reaping the economic benefits of that. And so when when we look at the 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 three pillars, if you will, of of revenue that the city brings in, and we've just gotten done with, you know, a few days of of hearing about the needs of our community, economic activity through which we've been, reap the benefits of from through sales tax, those other communities are ahead of us and and they're ahead of us in ways that that are hurting our current residents. And so I think that that, you know, when you look at at tools that have been used, I mean Fargo's been aggressive with TIFs for thirty years and we've had two, I believe, in Minot, maybe three, three in Minot. That's a huge amount of economic development that we've left on the table. And there, other communities are benefiting from that every day. So I think that we we have to continue to push that message out here that this isn't about avoiding revenue sources or handing things off to other people. It's about leaving money, potential opportunities on the table for future generations. So I I I think that that message needs to be continued to be pushed out there.
Yeah, and I I appreciate that and I and I agree. And I I want to be clear here that TIF is a tool, but like all tools, it has to be used appropriately. Some communities use it better than others. And I would even say that some communities even abuse it. So and I'll use the in-building as an example when we negotiated that TIF. One, the what we were agreeing to pay for in that TIF was the removal of the asbestos. Right? We weren't funding any of the other private investment within that. But that was a significant barrier, that's why that building had sat vacant for twenty, twenty-five years, right? So obviously, the private sector is sitting on it for twenty-five years, they're not, they're not willing to make that investment. So by making that investment, we're going to do that. But and and what I think gets lost in the conversation about this when we talk about the TIF for it, we negotiated an agreement with them that, one, they were still paying, they were only getting a TIF for ninety percent of the value. So that ten percent that they were, they're still paying ten percent. Well, actually, they're paying the full property tax, but they get ninety percent of that rebated back. But that ten percent represents more property tax annually than what that building was generating in property tax before the before the development. So even with the TIF, that property is generating more property tax today, immediately than than it was. Two is, is that even with that ninety percent, is there's a minimum assessment agreement on that? So even if property taxes were to go down, they have agreed that they're going to pay a minimum amount. And then and then once that expires, the the future revenue that will come off that property will be significant. So we're already getting more property tax revenue to support our services off of that. That includes us, the school district, the county, everybody is all getting more property tax revenue off of that property today than we were before that TIF agreement was in place. And that's what I mean when I say we use TIF smartly. It's not just to go out and say, the developer wants this much money, so we're going to bend over backwards to give them all the money they want. They have to justify that expense. This is why we go through the process of having an outside legal counsel who specializes in TIF to analyze it. We have an outside financial advisor that address, that reviews the numbers and makes sure that that project would not be able to work without the amount of of. sure that that project would not be able to work without the amount of local investment into that. So we're not just throwing money at it because that's what the developer's asking for. It has to make sense and it has to make a difference. And and we're trying to use that tool smartly, not just because somebody wants to come in and it's a way for us to give a tax break.
Thank you for clarifying that. And and you're right. And I I want to give credit to whoever set that TIF up because everything you just said, first off, other cities have made bad use of TIFs. And I've saw that in other communities where almost as soon as one rolls or ends up, they're finding some other reason or some other creation. I don't want to get into that. I love, love, love the idea of doing that ten percent because of what you just said and to put that into real numbers. That building paid about eighty-five hundred dollars in taxes for twenty-twenty-two and about twenty-six thousand dollars with the ten percent TIF because of the difference of going from a building valued at four hundred thousand to the sale price of fourteen point seven million. That's a significant increase. There is significantly more money coming in right now. And if the TIF helped us to get that pencil whip together in order to make it possible, that is bringing in significantly more income than a building that was sitting there for years, paying eight thousand dollars a year in taxes and significantly behind on taxes and potentially coming back to the county at some point. That is a a good use of the TIF and and smart investing by our, by whoever put that together. I I really like that ideal. And and I I like the ideal of of being able to reap even during the process of the TIF, some of that revenue back rather than a a complete abatement. So I I think that's that's a fabulous example. So thank you. That's all.
I don't want to take too much more of your time because we still need you to, and I think we're slated to end here by no later than ten forty-five, so you have about an hour and fifteen minutes left. And and I think there's some serious conversation that you as the council need to have to give staff some direction as far as budget priorities. So I have the direction I need that as I go work with staff and the management team to bring you back the recommended city manager budget on July fifteenth.
Steve?
If I could, Mr. Mayor, I think given the importance of the things we're talking about and the dialogue, the interaction we're having, I really would ask that we dispense with that artificial limit of ten forty-five. It takes us to eleven, so be it. I think this is worth the time and effort and I don't want to be constrained. I don't want staff to be constrained by that arbitrary limit. So if we could be flexible with that, I would appreciate it.
We will. We'll do.
Thank you.
We'll do what we can.
That's what I thought.
So at this time, just we're going to reset the room a little bit for the for the council meeting. We'll take about a, we'll come back at nine forty for the scheduled nine o'clock council meeting. And I I think I've already briefed council members and candidates on kind of the the